Welcome to the first meeting of 2021. I hope everyone has had a healthy start of a new year, and hopefully we can continue down that path with everyone being healthy as could be right now. So, today is January 5th, 2021. Time is now 6:00 P.M. Regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Trinidad will now come to order through Zoom. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
It's the flag of the United States of America. A republic for which it is one nation, under God, indivisible, living, infinite, justicous.
Hoorah! Roll call, please.
Gano?
Here.
Goodall?
Here.
Grigo?
Here.
Ogoltry?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Council have any changes that they would like to make? What? Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call of vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Ogoltry? Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy item and staff reports. Through EA, we have Ms. Paula Little with the business support. Ms. Little, would you like to give your presentation, please?
Sure. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Paula. Hi, hi. I just wanted to tell you that over the holidays, Les Downs came into Marketplace Gallery to shop, and we got to talking about how great the City of Trinidad has been to the businesses during the pandemic with their financial support. And I said, "I should really thank them in person." And Les said that you would love that. So here I am with a giant thank you. Thank you, City Council! We've got economic development, Wally Wallace! And this thank you is from all the artists at Marketplace Gallery. I don't know if you can see, we have 26 artists on the list.
Wow.
So you've helped support all of them. And we're just so grateful and appreciative of this financial boost you've given us. It really would have been hard to survive without it. And everyone I talked to is just so amazed and dumbfounded that a city would do this for their people, for their businesses. So we just want to let you know how much you're loved and hope that you feel this love because we do love you. We love Trinidad, and it's the best city in the world, really. And I was talking to Allison today at the Mitchell, and everybody that I talked to says the same thing. They're just, "We can't believe it." We just feel taken care of. So I just wanted to thank you in person and wish you all a Happy New Year, spectacular 2021, and let you know that you've really spread the joy and that we love you. That's it.
Thank you. We love you, Paula. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paula.
Gonna leave now.
Thank you, Paula, for everything, and thank you for acknowledging all of the people that signed off on that. The City Council is happy to, very fortunate that we're able to do what we've done, so.
Oh, thank you, Phil.
Yeah, we are.
Thank you so much. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you so much, Paula.
Okay. Hi.
Item four, petitions or communications. Is there anyone online that would like to speak on the oral petitions/communications portion? Guess not. Back up a little bit. Mr. Valentine, do you have anything else from staff that you need to report on?
No, Mayor, not at this time, thank you. But I would just remind everybody on, we have quite a few people on. Some Zoom protocol. If you're not speaking, mute yourself. It kind of helps with some of the feedback we get. So just welcome, everybody. Glad to see everybody, but make sure you're mute, and then when you're ready to talk, unmute. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Item five, consent agenda approval. Item A, approval of the meeting minutes of December the 15th, 2020. Item B, appointment of Trustee Hensley to the Main Street Board. Trustee, are you listening in tonight? Item C, appointment of David Slater to the Main Street Board. David, are you on, please?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Item D, designation of public places for posting of notice of meeting, City Hall and the Carnegie Public Library. Item E, approval of the bills for $1,951,074.67. Item F, approval of payroll, December the 26th, 2020 through January the 8th, 2021. The only question I have here is, Trustee Hensley is not on tonight. Does Council want to move forward with that appointment at this time, or do you think he needs to be here?
I think with the recommendation and the vetting of the board themselves and recommending them to us, and under these circumstances, I think we should move forward with the appointment.
Everybody okay with that, then? Yes. Looks like everybody's shaking their heads from what I could see.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The only item that I have, and I'm not sure Cheryl is on, just to... Cheryl, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
You know, I noticed on item F, the approval of payroll, it shows December the 26th through January the 8th. But then looking through the information, it showed 11/28/12... 11/28 through 12/12, or $361,402.39. And then 12/12 to 12/25 was $342,009.14, which is okay. But it's just those dates don't coincide with that January 8th. Is there a particular reason?
Mayor, I don't do that report. I believe Kim or Audra. I apologize if I'm throwing Audra under the bus, but I don't put that on the agenda.
I thought maybe, I don't know if it's just a type or not. Kim or Audra, do you have an answer for me, please?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
The City Council approves the payroll in advance because there would be no way to approve the payroll and issue the checks timely otherwise. So City Manager reviews payroll, but City Council is actually approving that payroll issuance in advance.
All right. I was just checking because those dates didn't coincide very well. Okay, thank you very much. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Call of vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearings. Item eight, new tavern liquor license applications filed by Trinidad LLC. Doing business as Trinidad Lounge at 421 North Commercial, Mr. Curtis Ray Wallach. Hearing is now open. Mr. Wallach, if you want to listen in, and we'll have someone swear you in. I'm not sure if... Kim, you want to swear him in, please?
Sure. Please, will you raise your right hand? Do you swear in a testimony or not give us the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
That will turn it over to counsel, legal counsel, Les. Do you want to fill him in, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Wallach. How are you, sir?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. So it sounds like you can hear me okay. Is that fair to say?
That is very fair to say, yeah.
Good. So, Mr. Wallach, I want to begin by asking you, you are the representative of the applicant here this evening. Is that correct? That is, the applicant being Trinidady LLC?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And so we're clear, Trinidady is spelled T-R-I-N-I-D-A-T-T-I-E?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, good. And I want to ask you, sir, there was some question. The corporate paperwork that you filed, there's no comma after Trinidady. Like frequently, there's a name, comma, then LLC. Is it intentional that you do not have a comma?
Just the way that I wrote it when I signed up.
Understood. Not the biggest issue in the world. I just wanted to clarify that. So, sir, you were here for a tavern liquor license application, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And we're talking about 421 North Commercial Street?
Yep.
And what would be, what was and what would be, if approved, the Trinidad Lounge in Trinidad, is that correct?
Yep, I already have the neon, so run with it.
Okay. Why change the name if you have the neon?
Yeah, right?
Okay, all right. Now, sir, I want to ask you, you, your application, you have reviewed your application and you attest to its accuracy in all respects. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have really fine toothed comments, I think.
Okay, okay. But, Mr. Wallach, I want to ask you, I know you have some introductory remarks to read to council when I was talking to you. So why don't you, sir, if you would please, go ahead and address council and let them know what you would like to say?
Sure, thank you. Thanks, Les, thanks, Mayor, and council for having me. So I wanted to just give you a quick little background on what we aspire the lounge will do and how we see it fitting into Trinidad. So the Trinidad Lounge will be the first phase in revitalizing the historic Trinidad Hotel Building. It will activate a business on the street level for the first time in a decade. We hope that the Dad Lounge, as we've been calling it, serves as a hub for Trinidad's burgeoning art and music scenes and a home for creatives and creative ideas to blossom. The space is of a high cultural significance on its own. Its unique nautical southwestern aesthetic is something to behold, and we aim to keep that character fully intact. I like to describe the aesthetic as "the life aquatic meets unforgiving." The place is a museum in and of itself. The most common thing I hear when folks walk in is it's like stepping back in time. I hope that the lounge quickly becomes a must-visit stop on a trip to Trinidad and a friendly gathering space for our fellow Trinidadians. I further hope that it does its part to bring good people to town and keep them here for a night or two as one of the town's many cool and quirky gems. That's what I wrote up for the introduction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wallach. So, sir, I just want to ask you a few questions here. And so I want to ask you, Trinidady LLC, are, sir, the sole member of that limited liability corporation?
I am.
Okay. And if, let me ask you this. When are you hoping to begin business or open, if you will, if you're approved by City Council?
Even with the approval, we hope to not open until the pandemic subsides to a pretty reasonable amount, you know? So not until it's safe. Pausiously optimistic for May.
Okay. And, sir, this is an application for a tavern liquor license, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you intend to offer any food at all? I know I saw in your application a kind of a limited menu, but...
Very limited menu, but yes, with food, it'll be... Tentatively, we have it as White Castle sliders, the little microwaveable sliders, and chips, Pringles.
Okay.
That's about it.
And, Mr. Wallach, have you ever had a liquor license before, sir?
I have not.
Okay. So you understand that if you were approved by City Council, you are required, of course, to have knowledge of the Colorado and Trinidad liquor licensing rules and regulations and statutes?
I do, yeah.
Okay. And, sir, how many people do you hope to employ, again, if you're allowed?
When we're running full steam, we hope to be at about eight to 10 employees.
Okay. And are you going to have your employees' tips trained, sir?
We will make that a requirement for everyone who's working at the establishment, and we'll pay for them to get tips trained.
Okay. And you understand if there are any violations, alleged violations on your liquor license, even by any of your employees, you're the one who is ultimately responsible?
I do, yeah.
Okay. And you understand that if there are violations, you could wind up losing either your local or your state liquor license? You understand that, sir?
I understand that, and we'll make that super clear to all the employees.
Okay. And, Mr. Wallach, are you, what are you planning on doing regarding a manager? Are you going to be employing a manager? Are you going to be the manager?
I'll be the manager.
Okay. And so it's your intent to be there the majority of the time when your business is open, again, if you're approved?
I will be there so much that I'll pretty quickly get sick of it, I'm sure.
Okay, okay. And, sir, I want to ask you, the landlord for the premises is the Trinidad Hotel LLC, is that correct?
That's correct.
Would you tell us, I know the lease is part of your application, but what isn't indicated in the lease? Would you tell us, please, who is on that limited liability corporation? Who are the owners of that LLC?
I am 50% owner of that LLC, and Kavon Calabar is the other 50%.
Okay. And so the two of you own the premises, is that correct?
We do.
Okay. And Trinidad Hotel LLC will be the landlord to Trinidady LLC, correct?
Correct, yeah. Trinidady LLC will be leasing the first floor only.
Okay. And you have in your packet, again, a lease indicating a five-year agreement for the one LLC to rent from the landlord LLC, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now, sir, I want to ask you, I'm sorry, were you going to say something?
I was going to say, I know that we already discussed this, but I wanted to mention to council and to the mayor that I feel like that adds an extra layer of liability and accountability with me being an owner of the premises itself, you know? It's an extra layer of not wanting anything to go wrong and to, you know, be upstanding members of the community.
Okay, thank you. And, sir, I want to ask you, yours is the first application, or no, I'm sorry, not application process, but petition process of its kind that we have seen. Would you tell City Council what you did with respect to having a petition circulated? I'm making quoting gestures. Put a petition done in support of this application, if you would, please?
Yeah, I would have loved to do an in-person petition, but with COVID, that just didn't seem smart. I don't want to go door-to-door spreading it. So Audra, who was extremely helpful through this whole process, thank you, Audra. Audra and Nisha from the chamber, we all devised a good way to do this with the Google form. And I basically copied the verbiage from the paper petition, the packet that Audra sent to me as a sample, to do it online and copy that so they knew that they were signing in support or opposition. And they knew that by filling out and submitting the form that it acted as an electronic signature for them. I have the form here so I can tell you... Phil, I'm sorry?
I think that may have been background noise.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, each of the different categories, there's your email address and then name, your complete home address or business name and address if you're the manager or owner of a business inside of the downtown district, your age, and then support or oppose. And I copied the verbiage from the paper petition that Audra sent me. Just show what ticking support or oppose would mean, and then the date that they signed. And with the online form, we ended up getting, we got 80, but then some were stricken as doubles. So I think we got 69, all in unanimous support for it. We got no opposition, which I wanted to mention, I thought was pretty neat because we didn't have that face-to-face. Like you are at the Atlin's store and you hand them a piece of paper to sign. They might feel pressured to tick the support box just because you're standing in front of them. But we got full unanimous support even through the relative anonymity of a keyboard. So I thought that was pretty special.
Well said.
And we also got good support from all our direct neighbors and even folks that one would maybe consider our competition, although we certainly don't. But Walter signed, and Jay from Los Anamis, you know, and our direct neighbors, Kelly from the Smoker Friendly Building, I know, signed, so. It really was a lot.
And, Mr. Wallach, I just want to say, and thank you, sir, well said. There was, your name appeared on there. It appeared as if you would sign the petition. And so I am asking that your name not be counted, but I think you're absolutely correct that that would have us arrive at 69 in terms of unanimous support for the signatures you obtained. One question I want to ask you, sir, and that is, when people had their names affixed to this or they approved your request, that was the equivalent of signing their name, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I used, that's what I said on the form. So it said that by submitting, that's a signature in support or opposition, just that you're, you know, getting on there. And then I also copied the verbiage on the paper petition that said, "Do not sign this petition unless you are at least 21 years of age, a resident or owner slash manager of a business located within the designated affected area. Sign your name only, and you can't sign for another individual. You have not signed another petition concerning the same application, and you have read the petition in its entirety at the meeting."
Okay, thank you. Mayor, council members, I have no further questions of Mr. Wallach. I would turn it over to you for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, sir.
With Ms. Grigo, do you have any questions for Mr. Wallach?
I might have, wasn't paying attention, and I'm sorry. How did you circulate this petition? Was it on social media or...?
No, we specifically avoided social media just because I didn't want to get out of the filter of the designated affected area.
Okay.
The way that we ended up circulating it, and thanks for asking, I meant to touch on this. The way that we ended up circulating it was, one, Nisha and the chamber set up a little meet-and-greet thing with us. So we did it an hour, my wife and I talked about the place and our plans for it and all that. And then afterwards, we sent the link around. We also sent it to folks that we know and had contacts for inside of the affected area and asked them to send along to anyone that would be inside the affected area. We wanted them to, you know, not just send it to folks who they thought would support, but to send it to just anyone they knew that lived in there so we could get an actual, good, effective sampling of the population.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Ogoltry? Ms. Ogoltry?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Debono?
Yes, just, Mr. Wallach, thank you for having the initiative to start a business in Trinidad. Appreciate it.
I'm happy as heck to be here.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no further questions, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. The only question I had here is, did you have any opposition on your signature list? I didn't see anything.
None at all, no, it was unanimous support.
Okay. One thing I will say is, I'm very impressed with your, the lengths of responsibility that you have taken to try to be secure, to not pass COVID around or get COVID yourself. It's very interesting the way you've done this. And, you know, there's something that we've learned now. This is a way for the future, if that's possible.
Thanks.
There's a way to do this if this continues. Thanks for your concern, the way you've gone around and got all of your signatures. Thank you for that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I forgot, I didn't hear if anyone else asked, but everyone that works at the bar will be tip certified, correct?
Correct.
He said that.
I just wanted, I didn't hear anyone else ask that. All right.
Okay. Anybody else have any further questions? Anyone that is listening in to speak for or against? Not? Hearing is now closed. Could I have a motion, please, for approval for the new tavern liquor license application filed by Trinidad LLC doing business as Trinidad Lounge at 421 North Commercial Street?
So moved.
Motion for approval?
Yes. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Call of vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Ogoltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Ms. Grigo, could you read the findings, please?
I'd be happy to. This matter came on for hearing on the application of Trinidady LLC doing business as Trinidad Lounge at 421 North Commercial Street in Trinidad, Colorado, for a new tavern license before the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on January 5th, 2021, in City Council chambers in City Hall. The City Council, having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports of the city clerk and other city staff, petitions admitted into finding at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing makes the following findings. The neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Curtis Wallach testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor of or in opposition to the granting of the license. The city clerk's report showed that there are 40 liquor-licensed outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are five fermented malt beverage off-premises license, one fermented malt beverage on-premises license, one club license, 14 hotel and restaurant licenses, six liquor store licenses, seven tavern licenses, one arts license, three beer and wine licenses, and two lodging and entertainment licenses. The applicant submitted a petition regarding the liquor license application. The petition contained 69 total, I'm sorry, 80 total signatures, of which 70, I'm sorry, 69 were residents or business owners or managers from within the neighborhood. 21 years of age or older in favor of issuance of a liquor license at this location. No remonstrances were submitted. The applicant, through testimony and other evidence, made a prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Based on the evidence presented at the hearing and investigative materials provided for the hearing, the City Council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the City of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Trinidady LLC doing business as Trinidad Lounge at 421 North Commercial Street in Trinidad, Colorado.
Mr. Wallach, congratulations and good luck. Thank you for your investment and interest in the City of Trinidad, and hopefully that your business will do well. Thank you very much again.
Thank you all for having me and making Trinidad a special place to be.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Wallach. Thank you, sir.
On to item B. Public hearing for consideration of inordinance authorizing and directing the implementation of the City of Trinidad COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program Number Two. Hearing is now open. Mr. Valentine, do you want to comment on that, or you want to turn that over to Cheryl?
Actually, just a brief comment, and then I would turn it over to Wally.
Actually, just a brief comment and then I would turn it over to Wally and Cheryl for a little more. But thank you, Mayor and Council. As indicated by Ms. Little, this help that you have provided is helping the businesses to survive this unusual time. This ordinance, we passed the emergency ordinance, I believe, on, I believe, December 15th. After Council passed that emergency ordinance and then had the first reading of the second ordinance, staff went into action and started taking applications. And we've received quite a few. But this is the second reading to basically validate that emergency ordinance and set this officially into motion. So with that, Wally, I don't know, oh yeah, I see on there, can you kind of give a brief update on businesses and applications that have come in?
Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I put these applications out the week before Christmas and released the news through an email notice, then we put out that press release. Since that time, I don't have the exact number of businesses that have applied, but I'm guessing, or from the look of it, it looks like we're getting pretty close to about 100. Of the money that's been allocated according to the formula that we had put together to City Council before of supporting them with three months of utility credits and a $1,500 cash stimulus, all together, we've allocated out $242,100 so far, or we have, we are planning to. Of that, $114,600 of it is in utility credits and $127,500 of it is in a cash stimulus payment. So far, almost all of these businesses are returning businesses from the program in the spring, though there have been, it looks like seven that were businesses that did not participate at that time.
Can I? Yes. I do have one question, just to make sure, is hopefully that you vetted these people and made sure that they have to be open in order to receive these funds, is that correct?
Yes, we have contacted the people who are not opened and told them that in order to receive this payment, they have to reopen and contact us, letting them know that they are operating again.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I add something?
Sure.
Staff talked internally about possibly having a short special meeting on January 11th, either before or after your work session, to try to get some of these payments approved by City Council so they can be issued. Otherwise, they won't be going out until after January 19th, like January 20th or so. So I don't know if that's something that Council would entertain or not, but I didn't want to skip that thought.
I would say so. I'd say, I'm sure the Council would approve of that, so let's plan on having that special meeting.
Thank you.
I would ask that it would be possibly after the work session, the 11th is the day I will, it may not take long, but I go up and get all my stitches and everything out from the surgery I had, so allow me a little more time to get back from Quablo if we could do it afterwards.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good to do. Go ahead, Wally, if you want to continue.
Honestly, I think at this point, I'm kind of ready to take any questions from any council members.
Before we do, well, let's go and do that. Any questions? Ms. Gregel, any questions?
Just a clarification, so I'm still stuck on this Trinidad business license holder in good standing. So does that, you're still making them, you're still requiring them that they're still a business that's operating?
Yes, and that they, all of their paperwork is current and filed with the City of Trinidad. So we know that they are paying sales tax and everything and paying into the system in order to get this relief out of it.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Mr. Little?
Yeah, it's not much a question, but a comment. I just want to commend staff. I know we threw this at you really quick and pushed for this to happen. Y'all have done an amazing job and thank y'all so much for getting our vision come to fruition and helping out these businesses. With any luck, we've seen the last shutdown of the businesses and hopefully moving forward, we'll only see their capacities expand and hopefully be on the way to recovery.
Okay. Good comments. Ms. Ogletree?
Yeah, I'd like to say ditto to what Councilman Goodall just said, and it is a good feeling to be able to do something for the business community right now, and I'm very grateful for that and being part of it. So thanks to the staff and thanks to Wally for administering.
Okay, Mr. DeBono?
No, Wally, actually, we had a pretty good 18-minute radio interview yesterday and he pretty much answered a lot of the questions that I asked him and about the assistance program that's available with the fourth quarter marijuana tax revenue. So it went well.
Okay. Mr. Williamson?
I would just like to echo the comments that, really appreciate city staff getting this to be operational and come to fruition. Appreciate all the work that has gone into that. Wally, I did have a question for you. It's, I'll admit, it's not fully framed or thought out, but I was curious. And I don't know if there's any businesses that would actually fall into this category, but if a business was not operational at this point due to COVID, and I don't mean operational, just, but if their doors are shut and they're not operating, but they're fully ready to come back into operation, wouldn't it be wise to consider them potentially? I mean, what are the reasons that a business like that would not be considered for it?
Honestly, I think the biggest reason that we have thought as far as city staff is just that we kind of have to draw a line of what is permitted and what isn't in regard to certain businesses that are closed, that may not be planning on reopening, but they can tell us because we supported somebody else that has closed, that we should be supporting them as well. And really, just us trying to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to support the businesses that are really planning on continuing to operate and be part of our business community.
Sure, that actually makes sense. I mean, it'd be a slippery slope to get on. I was curious, so I wanted to ask.
Yeah, and like I said, we have contacted the businesses and told them, as long as there is still funding available in this program and they reopen, if they contact us, they are applicable for support.
Sounds fair. I was curious.
That's a good idea.
Thank you for asking that.
No, thank you. I have no further questions, Mayor.
Mr. Shu?
I don't have any questions other than, I had a friend that wanted to get in and on the computer, he said he had a little trouble. Have we got that straightened out or he just wasn't looking at the right app for it, Wally?
There are two separate programs going right now. One is the Business Assistance Program and one is the Residential Assistance Program. We did add one question to the Residential Assistance Program that I do believe was making it short out for a little while where it wasn't going through. But I was informed about that this morning and forwarded on to Kim and she took care of it immediately, so that application is working again.
Okay, he said he was going to come down and check down here, so I guess that would be the easiest way for him.
Yes, I believe so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Wally, I just wanted to say, and Mike, I wanted to also thank all the city staff for all the work, like I said, I know Mr. Goodall said it pretty well. We put this on you guys pretty quick and you guys have come through every time when we ask you to do something like this. And it's good to, you know, one of the best feelings I've ever had is being able to help our community in any way, shape, or form, and I think we probably all can say the same thing, that's on City Council. It's a good feeling that we are capable of doing this. The one thing I was going to mention, also, that was a good question that Mr. Williamson had, and of course, we've not expended all the money out, so it sounds like there might be a second round of this stimulus that we have. If some of these businesses that maybe are not opening, but let's say they do open, will they qualify, they should probably qualify if they ask, is that correct?
Yes, and kind of like, I don't know, some of the examples we were thinking is, like, there's some restaurants that did, that were forced to close temporarily to indoor service that really just are not the type of restaurant that applies for delivery or pickup, such as Reno's, where it's more about the atmosphere and like going to see the performers, that we were very understanding that it may not be fitting within their business model to change in that way, but we'd still like to support businesses like that that we think are really important parts of our community. So that was kind of our thinking behind that.
Okay. Cheryl, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Mayor. Wally reported on businesses. We're handling the residential side. Applications are coming in left and right and Brittany's getting those keyed in as quickly as possible. We are the ones that suggested changing the application just to help, to help us filter the applicants a little bit better, and it did cause a glitch. I went through the application process myself this afternoon and it went through. However, we figured out it's not working on cell phones, so if, Councilman Shu, if your friend was using a cell phone, please ask them to use an iPad or their computer. Also, we have applications available at the front door or we can email the applications. As of 4 o'clock this afternoon, we had 49 applicants on the resident side, and that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone that's listening in to speak for or against the ordinance? And just a reminder to everyone that's listening in, there was, the total amount that we have available for giving out is $500,000, so just for everyone's information. Hearing is now closed. Item B1, second reading of ordinance authorizing and directing the implementation of the City of Trinidad COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program number two. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please. Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 7 unfinished business, we have none. Item 8 miscellaneous business, 8A, transfer of ownership of a hotel and restaurant liquor license filed by the Mission of the Bell LLC at 134 West Main Street, Suite 14, formerly Mission at the Bell Incorporated. For public hearing at 6:00 PM on January 19th, 2021. Mr. Lucero, I think you're incorrect because you were there earlier.
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, I guess the second was in there as well. Any discussion? Ms. Gregel?
This is just, actually just a legal change of name, correct? Nothing else is going to change from the operation of the business, correct?
Correct, nothing is going to change regarding the business, but it is a transfer of ownership. It's going from the prior owner to Mr. Lucero in his LLC.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
All righty. Now, I have no further questions.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing.
Ms. Ogletree?
I just had one question on number 14 on the retail license application. It's, the question is, has a, can you hear me okay? Because before, people weren't hearing me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Has a liquor or beer license ever been issued to the applicant, including any of the partners, if partnership members or managers of an LLC or officers, stockholders, or directors of a corporation? And then the response was no, but as far as I can tell, Mr. Lucero was, was involved in the, is involved in the current liquor license that Mission at the Bell had, so in some regard, so I just thought that was, might be inaccurate.
Correct.
Because if it's supposed to be yes, it says identify the name of the business and any current financial interest in said business, including any loans to or from a licensee. I just noted that that may be inaccurate, that response.
And thank you, Councilwoman, and we, at the hearing on the 19th, I think Mr. Lucero can answer any questions and if that's acceptable, please.
Okay, sure, sure, that's the only question that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. DeBono? I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Mr. Williamson?
I have only one question, not sure it's germane to the discussion, though I was wondering if the chili is going to continue to be as hot.
Absolutely.
That's right. I'm kidding. He wants you to consume more liquor because of the hot chili. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. It's a bit germane, perfect, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shu?
No, I have no further questions.
The only question I have for you is, Mr. Downs, is, you know, you're the agent that represents him.
Right.
19th, when we have this, this hearing, it doesn't cause any issues with that?
And Mayor, thank you for bringing that up. I formed the LLC for Mr. Lucero. I am not going to be representing him. And I did want to make that abundantly clear because my name is on the corporate documents, but I simply set up, again, the LLC for Mr. Lucero. So that is all I did and, you know, so I do not feel that I have a conflict of interest, but I did want to disclose that and I appreciate your bringing that up.
Okay. Just want to make sure that you're still able to represent the City of Trinidad, like you typically do in answering questions, asking.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, there aren't any other questions? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 8B, temporary permit application filed by Mission at the Bell LLC at 134 West Main Street, Suite 14. Could I have a motion, please, for a temporary permit application?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Other than toying down the hot chili? There's no, call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. We will see you on the 19th, Mr. Lucero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Item C, consideration of supplemental agreement between the United States of America, Department of Justice, and the City of Trinidad, Colorado. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Got a second, somebody say?
Second.
Great. Discussion, Mr. Valentine, do you have, going to give us a brief, and I know we've gone over this before, but do you have any additional?
Mayor, thank you, members of council. We have Bob Justin and Karen Wolf available for questions. This is, was brought to you at the work session. We had discussed that there was a question regarding the attachment and Karen and Bob have provided those. there was a question regarding the attachment and Karen and Bob have provided those for you and what has been completed, incomplete, and what's required. I would turn it over to Mr. Just if he has anything to add.
Hey, Mr. Just, have any additional comment?
Bob, I see you. I see on there, if you're on the phone, star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, no, I have no questions. Karen's not here tonight, but feel free to ask any questions, please.
Okay, let's go ahead and start with Ms. Griggo. Do you have any questions?
No, no, I have none.
Mr. Goodall?
Again, no questions, but thank you for getting that detailed list. It's very impressive of how much stuff we've been able to get done and accomplish, and how short the list is of stuff still to be done. I commend staff once again on the great job on this settlement with the Department of Justice, getting us ADA compliant.
Ms. Ogletree?
Again, ditto. No questions.
Mr. DeBono? No, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just keep up the great work. Mr. Williamson?
Team is previous comments. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Schu?
No, I don't have anything. Good job out there.
Yeah. And from my end, I just want to say thank you for that list, showing what is and what is not completed. The list really looks short now after you filled in the blanks. So thank you for doing that. The one thing I noticed on the list at the Central Park Grandstand was not on that list anywhere. There were different components of Central Park, but not the grandstands in particular. Any particular reason?
Will you cover that mic?
Yeah, sure. Mayor, the grandstands, we have DMS, our consulting engineer, along with structural engineer and architect firm looking at the grandstand. Basically, that grandstand, as we looked at it, is total rebuild. So we're working with DOJ. And like I said previously, they are impressed with what we're doing, and they will be working with us. Mr. Beach had worked with the our engineering firm, and he has some concept drawings. And Bob, he's hit the ground running for sure. I don't know, four weeks in, five weeks in, whatever it is. We will be bringing something forward to discuss on how we move forward with that grandstand and getting it ADA compliant. So there's a lot more to it than than just fixing some ramps over there. So staff is working on that.
You know, I know that, you know, the timeframe on the longest timeframe that it shows on the current list is 30 months. Do you feel like maybe the DOJ will give us some additional time because of the scope of the size of the project?
I really do, Mayor. Like I said the last time, since we're showing such good progress, the agreement the last time gave us a year extension. Well, in in looking through documents, it's actually a three-year extension that they're giving us with the supplemental agreement. So three years from council approval, and we get signatures from DOJ and the mayor. Starts the three-year period, and we will continue to work to come up with a solution over there. And I'm fairly certain that they will work with us, being that it's such a it's a pretty large, complicated undertaking.
You know, another question to that and is the cost is probably going to be pretty pretty big. Do you anticipate that we may be able to get some money from the state or someplace else that we can apply for to help with the costs?
Correct, Mayor. Part of part of the reason for the concept plan is to come up with a scope of work required, so we could take that forward to DOLA, to GOCO, to all the granting agencies to leverage what monies we do have. Because yes, we do not have an estimated cost yet. That's part of what Bob has been working with and talking to our engineers. So.
Any further questions from council?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Schu.
Mike, just just for curiosity there, at Central Park, you mentioned one time in the work session about the paving over there, and you patched it up. Are we do you have any plans to repave that whole parking lot at Central Park? Because it's getting kind of they use it a lot, a lot of traffic there. And I'm just kind of curious about that.
Yeah. So I will say that we one of the ADA requirements was to put accessible parking in there. In order to make that compliant, if you drive over there, we had to remove a good section of pavement for the parking areas, the van accessible parking areas, and then just kind of ramp it up there. So that is definitely part of the overall plan. We can't leave it like that, but we are are for the most part compliant for van accessible parking there.
I think I just kind of curious when I was over there looking at that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Mike.
Go ahead.
On the on the grandstand, is a three-year timetable doable for us, Mike? Or do you think we're going to have to extend it further?
Um, I'll be honest, it's a very tight timeframe to not only come up with the concept, get the design, demolish what's there, build new, but in between all that, find the money.
Yeah.
Yes, that is that is, it's questionable, but staff is going to work hard on that, along with everything else they're doing. So, yeah.
The only other question I have, Mike, is, you know, being that it's the baseball field, do you anticipate any displacement? Because depending the time of the year that it's done, triggers of the high school and the college, they play baseball there.
Correct. And they're well aware of what we're going to have to do. And we've got the high school, the college, the triggers, and we've got to, you know, kind of renew that agreement with with all of them, along with just our local public. It's a it's a community park. And we'll have to figure construction around that. Or we also have the South Side Park fields that have been repaired, not as nice of a grandstand, but it does have seating up there. And we have the ability to practice and play games up there too. So now.
Okay, if there's no other questions, call a vote, please. Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes. Item D, consideration of Phase One, abatement of the Fox Theater contract between the city and Blue Sky Restoration Contracts Contractors, LLC contingent upon CD PHE scope approval. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion, don't turn it over. Ms. Clark, do you are you the person to give us information on this?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I wanted to give you a little bit of background on this plan we have going. The contract with Blue Sky is just one step in an overall plan toward abatement of the hazardous substances in the Fox Theater. Using our current EPA assessment grant, we completed a Phase One and Phase Two assessments on the theater. And with those reports, we put out an RFP. Blue Sky was the contractor selected for abatement of the asbestos and lead paint. The total cost would be $361,765. We then applied to CD PHE for funding assistance and were awarded $108,000 pending final contracting documents. Next, we submitted an application to the EPA for a cleanup grant in the amount of $500,000 to cover all abatement of asbestos, lead paint, and additional hazardous substances such as the bird droppings. This amount also includes the cost of advice and oversight of the historic resources by Greg Friesen. The EPA cleanup grant awards are announced in the spring. So at this time, we'd like to utilize $62,781 of the CD PHE funding to complete the Phase One scope of work as listed in the Blue Sky contract. We'd be reserving the remaining funding of the CD PHE grant to be utilized towards the 20% match. Not awarded the EPA cleanup grant, then we'll use the remaining CD PHE funds to complete what we can of the Phase Two of the scope of work. And that's all the information I had, unless you have questions for me.
Okay, Ms. Griggo?
So, give me an idea, Georgie, what was the 20% on I'm trying to do the math on the 298 984. Is that what we're talking about? Will we have enough money left over for that 20% match?
Well, actually, the cleanup grant, we applied for $500,000 to cover all various costs in regard to abating all of the hazardous substances.
Okay.
So we would not have, you know, this amount of money would not cover our match. Although, and Mike, you can help me out here with some of this, but some of the in-kind services, we can work towards other. We will have to find additional funding. If we were to be awarded $500,000 from the EPA, that would that would be a great thing. We would have $100,000 that we would have to match. So the remainder of that $108,000 would go towards it, and then we'd have to seek additional funding.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
Didn't didn't we set aside some money for grant match already for this or in some other funding somewhere? Did we not, Mike, set aside some money for just that?
We did. We set aside for the Fox and and other type grants that come along where we're not budgeted for. So we do have, I believe it's $100,000 for matching if needed. I will add to what Georgie said. We're also working with our lessees over there, urban neighborhoods in the Fox West Theater Alliance. And they're working hard toward finding funding for all for the overall project. But as we piece together what we can, you know, that's part of it. So thank you for that, Councilman Goodall. And yes, there is some there.
Excellent. I was hoping my memory served me right. So that's a good thing. We're a little bit prepared at least. So that's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
Georgie, I remember at some point we had talked about the front of the building becoming activated when some of this work had been done. If when the work of Phase One is completed, will any part of the front of the building be ready for any kind of use?
Yes, that's what we were focusing on in Phase One. Once the Phase One of the abatement is done, that that goes towards those retail spaces there. So they'd be able to get, you know, someone in there and get money flowing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. DeBono?
I really don't have anything other. I've read some of the reviews and reviews and some of the testimonials about Blue Sky Restoration. And they have like a 96% approval rating that they would people would hire him, you know, again. So they did a lot of disaster work after the hurricanes in the South. So pretty reputable place.
Good enough. All right, Mr. Williamson?
I have no questions, man.
Okay, Mr. Schu?
The only question I have, Georgie, are chances pretty good that we'll get this $500,000 grant? Or would that just be something that we have to wait and see in the spring to hopefully get?
Yes, we do have to wait until the spring. We submitted the application towards the end of October, and I did receive notification that it was eligible. So it's in the process, but we will just not know until they announce the grants that are awarded.
Do they do they give it a $500,000? Or would they lower it? Or I mean, what I'm kind of curious is would the full amount be awarded? Or would they drop it down to some other figure?
I'm not sure I have an answer for that. This is the first time we've I've applied for a cleanup grant with the EPA. And it's hard to get any information until they just make their decisions on what they're awarding.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious. Thank you.
Ms. Clark, I was going to ask you, this Phase One is just pretty much for the front area. Is that correct?
Yes, it was focused on those front retail areas of the building.
It doesn't talk about it. It's not about the box office area?
I'd have to go back and check if it includes that box office area. It was the front of the building.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
And the second question, that $500,000 that were applied for the EPA, would that be for the entire building afterwards? Or what would you spoke of the cleanup?
Yes, that would that would be the entire cleanup. It would include, like I say, the bird droppings. There's a few things in there. Well, probably a number of things in there that have to be dealt with very carefully. Certain screens behind the stage, the ropes and things that are coated with bird droppings. But that that would click that $500,000 would abate the entire Fox Theater.
Something that I that I saw, Article 10, 10.3, they talk about unknown conditions subject to adjustment for cost. And with a building of this size and the the sit, you know, all of the asbestos and lead paints and stuff that they may find once they get in there, that's really the scary part of this project. Just to let you know. The other question I had, and, you know, we ran into this, ran into this a couple of times with a couple of other projects. If for some reason that the project has to get shut down, is there an additional mobilization cost once they come back in?
Yes, I believe there would be.
Okay. Last question I have is that any of the who is who are I know we're paying the Blue Sky contractors, but for any type of materials or subs, do we pay those? Or does the contractor pay them?
I'm sorry, Georgie, I'll take that one. It's a quote for or bid for the abatement of all that. And any subs required by Blue Sky would be under their their contract. It's not a separate type thing. There is one section in there, Georgie, about if we need additional testing, that we would have to pay for.
And I do know that, you know, Mr. DeBono did some checking into the background of the company. They were very reputable. And I've, you know, being in the construction business, I'm always concerned about leads and leans, and that's the reason for my question. concerned about leads and liens, and that's the reason for my question, you know, being that they're paying them out to make sure that we get lien waivers if that's necessary. That could be something they could discuss if necessary. Any other questions from council?
No, sir.
Okay, call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item A, consideration of bid results for 2021 compact track loader with 60-inch wide forestry cutter attachment. That would be to Bobcat of the Rockies. We did receive three bids, and they were a low bidder. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Valentine?
Actually, Mayor, I will again turn this over to Mr. Just. He came on board and started to learn the procurement process right away. This is something council has been wanting for quite some time. He went after and got three quotes, and here we are, so. It, I believe council allotted $105,000 out of the marijuana funds. This came in at $98,966, and we also got the flail motor that fits on the end of the excavator, which all comes in pretty close to that $105,000, so real comfortable with that. Sorry, Bob, I don't know if you have anything to add.
No, you did good, Mike. I think this piece of equipment's going to be a huge asset to the fleet because we can add so many other different attachments to it that just makes it really versatile.
Okay, start with questions, Ms. Griggo.
I have no questions. I just want to know, does it come with air conditioning?
It does, and heat.
Oh, how about television sets and stuff?
No TVs.
No, okay. No, I think, I agree. I think this is a piece of machinery we can definitely use within the city. Try to get some of those wild areas tamed a tad.
Okay, Mr. Goodall.
Yeah, I think this is long overdue. The amount of complaints we get from the people wanting the Riverwalking areas cleaned up, the Boulevard Edition, make it more open, people feel safe, I mean, it's about time we get this, and I'm glad to see it coming about.
Ms. Ogletree.
My only question is, do we, are we going to need some training for staff to know how to use this loader, or is staff already trained in knowing how to do this?
Yes, we are going to need to spend a little bit of time in training because it is somewhat specialized.
Okay. Is there any money that needs to go out for that too, or is that included in this for the train?
I don't anticipate anything. Do you, Mike? I think we can be done in-house training.
Right, it's in-house training, and Bobcat of the Rockies, all the equipment we've purchased from them, they provide initial training on the equipment, all the safety features. This track loader comes with a huge amount of safety features, closed cab, the glass front window is, I think, one-inch-thick plexiglass. It is a piece of equipment that definitely needs training, but Bobcat of the Rockies provides that, so as part of the purchase.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Mr. DeBono?
No, Mike, did the city get a pretty good price on that piece of equipment?
They were all very close bids. Fortunately, Bobcat, a well-known name, has a pretty good municipal program where governments get a pretty good break, and I think we got the right piece of equipment for what we need to do.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
I have no further questions. I have the utmost trust of you guys in vetting that. I'm excited to see it in action. Thank you.
Mr. Schuh?
No questions.
Okay. You know, I'm glad to see that this piece of equipment is coming to us. We can use it, especially, you know, expanding our parks program down the river bottom, you know, this other area northwest of town. It's going to be all the more reason to have a piece of equipment like this. I guess, Mr. Just, I guess the one thing that you probably need to do is to call Ms. Julie Knudsen. I've talked to her about this before, saying that this is something that we're thinking about purchasing. She thought it was a tremendous idea, and kind of coordinate, I guess, use for it and when to use it and how, you know, whenever it comes that we have to use it, so just get ahold of Ms. Knudsen and see what you guys can come up with.
We will do that, Mayor. As you know, invasive tree species that we have in the river bottoms and whatnot, that is one of Julie's top priorities, is try to get rid of a lot of these invasive species like tamarack and such.
Yeah, they are a real problem, so. Any other questions council has? Okay, call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Valentine, do you want to go ahead and fill us in on that, or would Mr. Vehill be the person to fill us in?
I believe Mr. Vehill is online. If you are, Mark, star six to unmute, otherwise unmute on your phone.
Okay, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, yeah, I'd like to recommend the city council amend water restrictions, allowing extraterritorial water taps while under Level One and Level Two restrictions, and not allowing extraterritorial water tap during Level Three water restrictions. We would also be amending addresses ending in even numbers to water on Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday, and allowing them to have a weekend watering day. Right now, under our current resolution, no extraterritorial water taps are permitted during Levels One, Two, or Three restrictions. By amending this resolution, we would be allowing only three-quarter-inch single-family residential water taps to extraterritorial customers. At Level Three water restrictions, no additional or new rule or extraterritorial water tap would be granted. Under our current resolution, allow customers with addresses ending in even numbers to water on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Addresses ending in a non-number to water on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. By amending this resolution, we will be allowing customers with addresses ending in an even number to water on Wednesdays, Fridays, and Sundays, which would give them a day on a weekend. This would also amend no watering on Sunday to no watering on Mondays. We've had several, I should say, customer complaints that end in even because they only get water during the weekdays, and they have to work during the weekdays, and it makes them harder, while the odd gets water two days during the week and one weekend. So, by doing this, they would both have two weekdays and one day on the weekend, which would make it fair to those customers. Also, as far as changing the water restrictions, you know, right now, we're going through a time where we have a shortage of housing and so forth. People are wanting to buy land and build house, but they can't get water taps if they don't live in the city limits. This would allow them to get water taps as long as it's not larger than a three-quarter-inch water tap for a single-family residential, which would enable more growth. And also included, that the water industry estimates that an average person uses 3,000 gallons of water monthly, so a family of four would use 12,000 gallons for bathing, cooking, washing, recreation, and watering. So, roughly 70% of this use occurs indoors, which is equivalent to 8,400 gallons per month, and 30% for recreational watering, or 3,600 gallons per month. To kind of sum that up in Trinidad, what we kind of see is, like, right now, we're just using domestic water, no one's doing any irrigation for watering, so we're kind of averaging probably 1.3 or 1.4 million gallons of water a day leaving the water treatment plant. As for in the summer, especially during the hot months of July and August, we've seen as much as 6.5 million gallons a day leaving the plant, but kind of average anywhere from four to four-and-a-half million gallons a day. So, and most of that is irrigation, like from the golf course, cemeteries, schools, parks, you know, our large water users. It's our domestic that are not our large water users, more or less irrigation. And we will be conducting a water rate study based on water conservation. Now, in the next few months, that I'll be bringing to council, but I'm going to have that water rate study done first, so, and that would help curbs, hopefully help curb some of the, the large amounts of water that we've been using here in the past, so. If anybody has any questions.
Before we move to questions, Mr. Valentine, do you have anything to add?
No, Mayor, I think Mark, Mr. Vehill summed that up fairly well. Like he said, we've got a lot of requests for extraterritorial water taps that we've had to deny because of the restrictions set forth, and honestly, a three-quarter-inch domestic tap is not part of our, especially out in the rural areas, they don't have a lot of irrigation and grass. So, with Mark taking a look at that, we've rethought this a bit, and he's also talked with Gil Ramirez up at North Lake, you know, who manages our water supply, and I think we will monitor this, but I think it's a good thing. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, let's get some questions, Ms. Griggo.
I think this is a great idea, and I really want to thank Mr. Vehill for all the time and effort and thought he's put into this. I have had about three people call me over the past month requesting the water taps, and I do believe, you know, Trinidad is a quasi-rural, small-town area, because some of the people that I'm talking to are in, within what we would consider the boundaries of Trinidad, but they aren't, so I think it's nothing but a win-win situation. Thank you, Mark. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griggo.
Yeah, great job, Mark. I think this is great forward-thinking with the housing shortage, we need to take advantage of everything we can to get as many houses built, and now's not a time to be turning down water taps for residential-type dwellings. I think this is a great idea, and also allowing the water day on the weekend for both even and odd numbers, I think is just a good deal all the way around. Thank you.
Ms. Ogletree?
Mr. Vehill, one of the areas that I've heard complaints about this from is the Santa Feita Ranch. Will this enable the people who live out there to apply for a residential tap?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. DeBono?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, Mark. You've always done a great job. As long as I've known you, there, being at the city, and just keep up the great work. You're a great water engineer.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no questions. I think it's a great proposal, and I think it'll be super helpful.
Mr. Schuh?
No, I have nothing. Just agree with everyone. I think it's a good idea that we're going forward, working with stuff like this and changing stuff.
Mark, I got a couple of questions for you, actually a question and a comment, actually. Through, you know, in our building that we get within the city, it shows not by gallons, it shows by cubic feet used. So, the 3,000 gallons that you, that the average family of three uses, how many cubic feet would that be?
Yeah, give me a moment. Let me find a calculator. Basically, one cubic foot of water is equal to 7.48 gallons. So, let me locate a calculator for you. Okay, thanks, Bob. You got to that before me. Thank you.
No problem.
So, 401 cubic feet. Okay. Well, it's good to know.
Yeah, so like.
If there's anything change with this, and people ask, oh, I calculated back down from gallons to cubic feet, you know, we have an answer for it.
Yeah, just tell them that one cubic foot of water is equal to 7.48 gallons.
Mayor, I might add, if I may, that's Mike. As we're finishing up these AMI meters, they're all calibrated for gallons, and as we, Mark alluded to, when we go through the whole rate study and everything, we may make it easier for the customer to understand how many gallons is also part of education on conservation and showing them, you know, how wasteful they can be. Their grasses are green enough, they don't have to water daily. So, anyway.
Okay. The last comment that I had left, I think this is really a good idea for the simple reason is that I do know that, you know, some of the workers have to go out and bleed off some of the water that sits there, and it's better to utilize it and have people, you know, pay for the use of the water that's there instead of having to waste this water like has, you know, that is done periodically, so that's one reason why I think this is a good move. Any other questions from council? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Item G, Memorial Resolution Technology and the contributions of Nick G. DeBono upon his passing. Mr. DeBono, first of all, I wanted to express my condolences, and I'm sure the condolences of the rest of council on the passing of your fathers.
Thank you.
I was going to say that. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Ms. Griggo? Any questions?
No, no.
Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
No questions, ma'am.
Mr. Schuh?
No questions.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to take the opportunity to read this resolution. Resolution number 1586, a memorial resolution of the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acknowledging the contributions of Nick G. DeBono upon his passing. Whereas Almighty God in His infinite wisdom has seen fit to take Nick G. DeBono from this earthly life, and whereas Nick G. DeBono faithfully served the people of the City of Trinidad as a member of the Trinidad City Council from 2008, and whereas during his lifetime, Nick G. DeBono served our country in the United States Army, Korean War veteran, having fought in the Pork Chop Hill Battle as an employee, also as an employee of the railroad, as a Trinidad police officer, as the county veterans service officer for the final 36 years of his career, and a member of the American Legion Post 11 for 50 years. And whereas upon the passing of Nick G. DeBono, the City of Trinidad wishes by this resolution to acknowledge his many contributions to the community and to express his regret, his regret and sorrow to the family of Nick G. DeBono. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado. With that, the mayor and city council do hereby extend their condolences to the family of Nick G. DeBono and by this resolution do hereby remember the many outstanding contributions he made to the Trinidad community. Be it further resolved, that this res- resolution shall become a part of the official minutes of the proceedings of the Trinidad City Council, and a copy of the same shall be provided to the family of Nick G. DeBono. Introduced and read and adopted this fifth day of January twenty twenty-one by Philip Rico, Mayor, Karen Grego, Mayor Pro Tem, Rusty Goodall, council member, Franklin Schuh, council member, Eli DeBono, council member, Hillary Ogletree, council member, and Aaron Williamson, council member. And, uh, we'll have, uh, all of council, if you could, uh, get away to come in and sign, uh, so we can get this off to the DeBono family, so. Do you remember, did we take a vote on that yet?
Yes, and just, we need to do a roll call.
Okay, please do.
Mona?
Yes, thank you.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Council reports. Ms. Grego?
I am liaison to the Historic Main Street Board, and unfortunately, their meetings are on the same Tuesday as our regular meeting. And I had a very important person in my office today, Mr. Mike Valentine, so I couldn't attend. So, you know, I have my priorities in, in line straight, but I don't have a, an official report. I did, I was at the hospital today, and they have connected the old hospital to the new hospital addition, and it looks fabulous. And it just brought to mind, I didn't get to say anything at the end of the year, but it brought to mind, to me, how far this little community has gone in a very short time. And it's, I want to give kudos to staff, to prior city councils that have stuck through thicker, thin when their budgets weren't that great. I mean, I think it is a kudos to the City of Trinidad to be so resilient and to continue, keep going. We're like the little engine that could. And I think we're almost at the top of that hill, and I don't want to jinx it, but thank you to everybody, city staff. You guys do so much. It's, it's unbelievable. I don't know how you do it, but thank you to the citizens of Trinidad. It's, I mean, to see our city grow like this, I never thought I'd see it in my lifetime. But to everybody, to the City of Trinidad, good job, guys.
Mr. Goodall?
A few things. I'm the liaison to the Parks and Rec Board, and I'd like to express their joy through all the hard work that they've put in and the stuff that they've accomplished, the support that they received from Trinidad City Council this year, and funding, um, allocated for covering the pool, which is always at the top of the list of all polls that they did every year, and for the position that they've been asking for, for an outdoor rec coordinator. Uh, they cannot express enough gratitude for, uh, the support of city council. And, uh, to them, it shows how much their hard work is paying off and how much support they do have from city council. Uh, Mr. Valentine, my phone's been blowing up from the residents in the Boulevard Edition. And, you know, we keep getting these calls. Karen was out there not long ago, brought us pictures, the people out there, the fires, the trash, illegal building going on. We just keep getting these in, and we're going to have to get with the police department. And I would like for you to insist that we take some measures to finally make some headway in giving the residents of that area out there some relief from all this crap that's going on, from cars dragging up and down the streets from one o'clock in the morning until six in the morning, to the illegal building going on, uh, to them empty lots adding on to RVs, um, illegal fires, all the trash. I mean, we keep hearing this and hearing this, and we keep talking about it and talking about it. And, and, Mike, it's time for, I think, for you to step up and get on, uh, Charlie's butt a little bit and insist that we get something done out there for these people. Um, I'm, I took this job, raised my hand, volunteered for this. I take these phone calls very seriously. This lady, she's sixty-seven years old, been here for a long time, calling me up in tears saying, I don't know what else to do. I keep asking for help. And, uh, we need to give them some help out there. And my last thing I have is, um, to all the restaurant owners out there, I know it's been a hard, uh, battle for y'all. And I know that we allocated money a couple of times to give to y'all. And I want you to all know from myself on a personal level that we know it takes much more than just the money that we're giving y'all. And I hope, it's the stuff we're doing behind the scenes that y'all don't see, the phone calls that are being made, the letters that comes to us through Mr. Valentine from the mayor, the phone calls made up to the governor's office, to Commissioner Lopez, um, during a meeting insisting either close all businesses, Walmart and his own included, or open them all up. The stuff y'all don't see that happens behind the scenes. We feel y'all's pain. We know it's hard on y'all. Know that we're working hard and doing everything we can above and beyond just the money that we are so happy that we have to give to y'all. And I wanted to make the comment and just let y'all know, we are doing much more than what y'all see up front. And we are working hard for y'all, and hopefully we've seen our last shutdown. That's our hopes, and we're, we're on the road to recovery now. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, uh, Ms. Ogletree?
Very briefly, um, tomorrow, I'm planning to attend, uh, an online focus group about affordable housing that Shafa's putting on, and Councilman Goodall's also been invited. I hope that you're going to be there as well. So I'm really excited about that, because that's one of the biggest needs that we have is affordable housing. So keep you posted on that.
Okay, Mr. DeBono?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Mayor. Just what I had stated earlier about, uh, Wally and I having a radio interview about the assistance program for the, uh, the businesses. And I've been mentioning that two or three times in the morning, uh, seven forty, eight forty. So, uh, and then Audra answered a question for me I had about, uh, condemning, uh, an establishment, but, uh, she got back to me about code enforcement, so. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Williamson? Um, I wanted to take this opportunity to mention, um, in the middle of December, a constituent of Trinidad sent a letter to city council, um, inquiring as to the shutdowns of business, uh, much along the same lines of what, uh, Councilman Goodall already touched on. Um, the letter was, uh, sent via, um, couns-, uh, Les, uh, back to that constituent, and, uh, it since has been made very public. The letter itself, um, I have no problem with, uh, it being crafted. Obviously, um, Mr. Downs was, uh, requested, uh, by council, but I did want to state in a public, uh, manner that I am personally opposed entirely and diametrically opposed to the contents of the letter. Um, I want that to be stated in a public form. That's, that's all that I have, Mayor.
Okay, uh, if you wanted to give me a call, I'd like to go over your concerns with that letter, okay?
Can do.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Schuh?
Mr. Schuh, you're muted.
Yeah, I got it. Uh, we'd just like to say, uh, uh, during the holidays and stuff, I'd like to thank all the city employees for all the hard work they did decorating and, and trying to make it a more pleasant end of the year and, and try to get things going, uh, gratefully for everybody. And I know it was, uh, not the best, uh, time for holidays, but, uh, I'd like to thank them all, and they did a good job decorating and, and making it, try to make it a pleasant Christmas for everyone. And I know they do hard work, and it's been tough on them. So I think we need to give them a kudo for all the hard work and stuff that they do with the public. That's all I got.
You know, I'm, I'm in total agreement with that, uh, Mr. Valentine. If you want to send out a memo to, uh, anybody that, uh, did any, uh, work on decorating the city. Uh, as a matter of fact, as I was coming through, uh, coming to the meeting tonight, I still noticed the lights were on and, uh, how nice it looks. And I think we need to be proud of, uh, our staff that worked hard to do that. Uh, it, uh, just with all of the COVID and everybody's concerns, at least they can drive through town and have some sense of feeling that, uh, you know, there's some light there. And, uh, it really does help lift the spirits, I think, of people. And anybody that is coming into the community, they're, they're probably saying, at least, uh, there's still some, there's, there's some spirit left in this community. So it's, it's good to see.
I will pass that on.
Okay. I just wanted to mention that, uh, you know, we do have a lot of work ahead of us this year. We're, we're still, like Ms. Grego said, we're maybe reaching, maybe trying to reach the top of that hill with a little blue engine or a little red engine, whatever you want to call it. Uh, but we do have a lot of work ahead of us and, uh, looking forward to working with all of council and staff, uh, to, uh, continue to, uh, make this community the community that it can be. Uh, you know, we're, we're thankful, and I'm thankful, that we had a, uh, a good twenty twenty, uh, even despite everything that did go on. Uh, financially, we are in good shape and, uh, and all the issues that we've had. So, uh, I think that goes to show, uh, you know, we asked Mike to extend the, to staff to, uh, work with all, all of staff to, uh, be conservative. And, uh, it showed that they did. And I think they're probably still going to continue to do that, because we're still not out of the woods with this yet, so. Uh, but, uh, you know, staff is doing a tremendous job for us, and thank you for that. One thing that I did participate in, the Los Angeles County Health Department, we had a meeting on the five-star, uh, COVID-nineteen program that is being, uh, pushed by the state. Um, they're putting together a, they put together a group of people that will be looking at, uh, how to introduce that into the community. So that's something that will be coming forward in the near future. I'm the representative, uh, liaison, of course, to the, uh, tourism board. Uh, they haven't had a couple of meetings, it looks like. I'm not sure what the reason is, but I'm sure that we will have one here, uh, now starting at the first of the year. Turn it over now to city manager, uh, Mr. Valentine. What do you have?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, just wanted to, uh, let council know that, um, there's been a, a fraud alert come out of the, uh, Colorado Department of, uh, Employ- Unemployment. Um, and, uh, Donna Volensic has placed a memo on the drive for your, uh, use. Um, the, uh, the recent scam actually hit me. I, I received a letter at home, uh, from the Colorado Department of Unemployment, and I thought, uh-oh, am I, am I done?
You're done?
No. It's a, it's a scam, and I think, uh, several council members actually also received the same, same letter. Um, so please, uh, it said, the memo has been sent to all employees and council members to alert them of the scam, as well as give instructions on what steps to take, uh, if you become a victim. It's important to file a fraud report on the Colorado unemployment site, as well as place a fraud alert with all three, uh, credit bureaus. It is also recommended that, uh, you make a report with the police department so that in the future, if something shows up, you, you will have record of, of reporting it. Um, like I said, I received that. I, I have, uh, filed with the Division of Unemployment, uh, fraud alert. Um, Donna has also received actual, uh, you know, unemployment claims into the HR department, so, uh, be mindful of that. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, we received a call from, uh, Kim Gonzalez, the House Department, and we are currently, um, getting a list of, uh, employees who would like to receive the vaccine. They're working their way down the list of priorities, priorities as they had them laid out, and, uh, healthcare workers, uh, first responders, and so on and so forth. The, uh, nursing homes have, and, and she's anticipating, based on, uh, on the progress and the, uh, dosages that they've received, they're coming in a little quicker than they anticipated. So city employees, uh, will be, uh, eligible. She said we were scheduled for, uh, April, but it, it may well come sooner. So we're doing that. Uh, city council also received, uh, an email, uh, today from, I think Audra passed on with the form, if, if you would like to sign for, uh, for the, uh, the vaccine. It's the Moderna, um, and there, there is, uh, a fact sheet on that also. So, um, that's all I have, Mayor, unless there's questions.
The only question I have there, and of course, you can't answer this, Mike, yourself, but, uh, with one question I have for Kim is, at the point in time that, uh, we, let's say that council gets vaccinated, for those of us who want to get vaccinated, uh, will we be allowed to have our meetings in person? Uh, I guess that would be one question that, uh, we can get an answer once that's all said and done. And I'm sure that Mr. Downs may, uh,
Well, and I, I, yes. I really haven't thought about that, Mayor, and I, but, you know, we can all have a discussion on that at a
Yeah, later on.
At a, at a later time. And, and it seems like that would be great if the, if the vaccine is a hundred percent, um, effective. But I, I did want to say, Councilman DeBono, I'm sorry for your loss, sir. And your, your dad was a wonderful man. He was a pillar of the community. And, uh, I, I feel richer for having known him. I, I do want to Yeah, absolutely. And, and, again, I'm sorry for your loss. I, I wanted to say to all of you that, um, I so appreciate Paula Little having come on here at the beginning of the meeting. And I have been wanting to tell you guys that everywhere I go, I mean, all the time, people are saying how appreciative they are of what council has done for them, um, with regard to this financial relief. And I was encouraged to go do Christmas shopping at the local art gallery, the Corazon Gallery. I was encouraged by a member of city staff who shall remain nameless, but her initials are Audra Garrett. So, Audra, who told me, she said, you've got to go down there. And I went down there, and it was wonderful. And I won't be returning by regaling you with my experience. But as soon as I walked in, Paula was just saying, oh, you're, you know, I had a hat on and a mask, and she's like, oh, you're Les. And, and she just started, you know, totally singing your praises for everything you had done. So I, I just wanted to, uh, to mention that to you. And I, uh, but really, people are very appreciative, and I, um, just, again, I'm so glad that she, she came out and mentioned that. It seemed like there was something else I was going to say, but I can't remember what it was. Obviously, nothing I have to say is legal, it seems like so. I just want to say those things and, uh, and well, well done, council. And I'd like to say Debbie Wagner has joined us this year. Hey, Debbie, Mayor, Council.
Mike, was you done, or did Les just take your time and run with it? Because the mayor asked him a question.
I'm sorry.
I was done. I was done.
I heard that he was
No, I'll call him out for you, Mike. I have no problem.
I've been drinking coffee late, so I'm a little, you know. Sorry, Mike.
Hey, Mr. Valentine, you know something I've, uh, wondering, and you can decide if you want to do this or not? You know, this COVID relief that we have given out, I mean, we've given out a million dollars to our local community. Uh, the Colorado Municipal, Colorado Municipal, uh, League, they send out their newsletter periodically or monthly. send out their newsletter periodically or monthly. I wonder if we shouldn't send in some information to them to show them what we have done to let the rest of the state know that our community is doing something for its businesses and residents. I'm not sure if council has any thoughts on that, but, uh, I think there might be something to do.
I can, I can propose something, Mayor.
Okay. I think they should know that, uh, we're, we're, we're doing a good job down here. Okay, adjournment, motion to adjourn. Sound moved. Second.
Second.
Second. Call of vote? Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Happy New Year Day. Good to see you.
See you next week.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.